Do you want to please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance? I have a pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here?
Here.
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 Marie Evans?
Here.
Alex Freitas?
Here.
Eric Jones?
Here.
Are there any changes to the agenda as presented? Motion to approve the agenda or adopt the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Seconded.
You mean seconded? Oh, in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Go, is, stateside, motion here. Is there a motion to go into executive session for the consideration of the matters related to the selection of a person who could be vacancy on the board? If you can. If you can find each other for the second. Did you get that?
When you get it, go. When you get it, second.
All right, roll call.
DeVito?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Freitas?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Shylo?
Yes.
Dombek?
Yes.
Motion heard.
For those of you who have joined us recently, we already started our meeting and have conducted an executive session and come back for an open session. And so, we are in the consent agenda part of our meeting. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? So moved.
So seconded.
Moved in second, roll call.
Freitas?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Shylo?
Yes.
DeVito?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Dombek?
Yes.
Motion heard.
Is there a motion to approve the NIA consent agenda as presented?
So moved. Seconded.
Moved in seconded, roll call.
Jones?
Yes.
Shylo?
Yes.
DeVito?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Freitas?
Yes.
Dombek?
Yes.
Motion heard.
All right, the moment we've all been waiting for, district staff recognition.
Everybody hear me okay? I avoid the microphone. Good evening and welcome to Staff Recognition Night. Sycamore is a great place to work because of the community we live in, the students we have, our supportive parents and our staff. Our staff makes this an unbelievable place to work, an unbelievable place for our students and our families. It makes the district. Tonight, we recognize those staff that have been committed to the district for a long time and have hit on certain milestones. So when I call your name, please come up, receive your gift from the district, and then hang back behind the tables because we would like a picture with your milestone group. And then Lauren will kind of direct you on what to do, and then we'll move on to the next group. So first off, our 10-year honorees. Brian Morelli from West. We can clap even if they're not here real quick. Melissa Doty from North Grove. That's all Melissa. Emma First, South Prairie. Beth Foose from Southeast. Mark Holstein from the high school. John Jennings from the middle school. Jen Cam from South Prairie. Carol Cozo from Southeast. Ryan Lyle from the middle school. Monica Mezenberg from life school. Sarah Moore from the middle school. Eric Nor from the high school. Lori Osterker from North Grove. Lisa Palowski from the middle, or from middle school, sorry. Elizabeth Peterson from the middle school. Jeff Schmidt from the high school. All right, this is the one, Lori Stover from the admin. Rachel Vidalis from the high school. And Megan Wilds from the admin. Those are our 10-year honorees. Let's give them another round. Hey, Moore, one second. We actually have a tweener here, so a 10-and-a-half-year honoree, Kelly Amman from North. So 15-year honorees. Day Bakta from the high school. Steve Balser from the high school. Danen Biermann from the high school. Megan Morelli from early childhood. Ryan Davis from North Grove, Southeast. This is the one, Tammy Deal from South Prairie. Trent Ferguson from the middle school. Lisa Kelly from the middle school. Lisa Miller from Southeast. Beth Smith from South Prairie. Mary Ellen Spicer from the high school. And Randy Zeitler from the high school. Again, one more round of applause for our 15-year honorees. Okay, so for our 20-year honorees, I saw a few of these out there. So Jill Bolda from the middle school. Dr. Jackie Clavon from South Prairie. Lisa Grofford from North Grove. Jenny Tequila from the middle school. Janet Weber from Transportation. And Lisa Wilkinson from the middle school. Again, let's hear it for our 20-year honorees. 25-year honorees. Sue Hughes from Southeast. Sue Burdum from the high school. And Karen Sipsey from the middle school. Again, for our 25-year honorees. Our 30-year honorees. Chauncey Caret from the high school. Let's hear one more time for our 30-year honorees. We're not done. A 35-year honoree. David Whitney from the high school. Again, everyone out there, I can't thank you enough for everything you do each and every day, and just to think of some of you doing that 30 years, 35, 51 years. Some of you that have retired and come back to recognize those that you worked with and those that continued on. People having multiple careers with the district just shows how committed you are to our students, our families, and that's what makes Sycamore Sycamore. So again, one more round of applause for all. I'm going to, at this point, hand it off to Steve for retirees, and then people will come up, kind of one by one, and talk.
Good evening again. Thank you all for being here. It's great to recognize staff, and we realize that not everybody could be here. There's a lot going on this time of year. There are ball games and end-of-year events and honors. We're recognizing middle school students at the high school tonight, so we realize that not everybody could be here. We appreciate that everybody that is part of the group here tonight was able to make it. So at this part of the evening, we're going to start honoring our retirees, and we'll kind of take turns doing this. And I get to kick things off by recognizing Lynn Riley. So I'm going to ask Lynn Riley to come forward. But she doesn't get to go just take her picture. I'm going to make some comments.
I just go like this and keep going?
I know. You have to stay here. So first of all, one of the things we did was we asked staff from across the district, if you've got thoughts about the retirees, feel free to share them with us. So what you see on the screen there, and that'll be broadcast later, is one of the comments that were shared about Lynn. So I'm going to share this, and then I've got a couple of additional comments. This person wrote, "I've loved coming to know Lynn. She is knowledgeable, kind, supportive of all, and consistently thinks about what's best for children. There's no doubt that the Sycamore schools are better because of Lynn Riley. We are beyond blessed that she stayed with us an extra year because it was just what we needed. She's leaving us in a better place. I will always remember her impact." So when I first met Lynn, three years ago, we were deep in the middle of COVID, which was hard for everybody. Hard for regular ed teachers, gen ed teachers, as well as students. Special education students needed, they need additional help and support. And during the pandemic, it was incredibly difficult to provide that. So I worked with Lynn quite a bit, right from the get-go, on how to do that. We didn't always get it done the way that we wanted to. We didn't provide as much support as we would have liked, but I think all things considered, we did a great job. And throughout that, I'm glad to say that Lynn's personality has always been the same. She's a happily, a happy, bubbly person, maybe due to a previous career that I won't talk about. She's always positive. She was always positive. How can we get this done? How can we support these students? How can we support the programs that we provide? Lynn's always been a team player. So I always tell people, when it comes to HR, I'm not as involved in that as I used to be, but when I was in charge of hiring, I always looked for two things. Somebody who was good at what they did, and somebody who was a team player. Not somebody who agreed with me all the time, but somebody who was able to have a conversation, maybe disagree, but then agree to disagree and work together moving forward. And I would say that a lot of the times Lynn and I have agreed on things, but not always. There's been plenty of times where we ended a conversation very respectfully, maybe disagreeing on the final decision, but Lynn has always been a team player, willing to move forward, to move the district forward and do what we needed to do. I'm going to miss her cookies. If you work at admin, you know that every once in a while, more than every once in a while, you show up and there's a tray of chocolate chip cookies in the kitchen, and that's because Lynn has baked, started at about 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning, and baked chocolate chip cookies, and then she kind of brings them around to offices and drops a couple off. Just another part of the positive atmosphere that Lynn brings to work. The comment mentioned that she is student-centered. Happy, positive, those are all really important things. Nothing is more important in education than being focused on what is best for students. And that was always the conversation with Lynn. What's best for these kids? What can we provide them? It's going to be the absolute best that they need. So that was always at the heart of the conversations that Lynn and I had, the conversations that she had with everybody. Sometimes I refer to Lynn as wearing the white hat. I wear the black hat. Sometimes I'm a little heavier-handed, not heavy-handed, but heavier-handed than Lynn is. Always advocated for kids and trying to do what was best for them. So it's always, I'm going to miss that when you retire. Lynn touched the lives of so many students and families and our entire staff across the district, as well as our community. May not have had students or in the schools, but Lynn's reach, I think, reached outside of the school walls because it reached students who were out of the community. So it's my pleasure to wish Lynn retirement, to rock into retirement, wish her the absolute best. And I'm going to pause here, and we're going to give retirees an opportunity to say anything if they would like to make any comments.
I'll stand here on the side. A few weeks ago, you know, when I did my last presentation at the board, and one of the things that I had said, and I feel that deeply, is I feel honored and certainly blessed that I got to work here in Sycamore and end my career as an educator. I love education. I always have, I think I always will, special ed, of course, being at the heart of that. But we have amazing families, amazing students, amazing staff. We have great administrators, great board, so it's a very collaborative place to be, and so I couldn't be more thankful to end. I don't know why I'm going to do July 1st. I keep saying that because I just don't know when you wake up on July 1st and what happens on the other side of this, so I'm not really sure. But I've loved this field for always. It's an amazing field. I'm hoping to get more people to come into our field so that people will become educators and feel this joy of having an impact on students for all your whole life.
Our next honoree is Pam Schremer.
All right, good evening. I'm Emily Waller. I'm the principal at West. Just like Mr. Wilder shared some comments that staff wrote, I have some staff-written comments as well about Mrs. Schremer. Pam, you've helped countless kids over your many years of service. Thank you. Pam, your snowmen throughout the years will always be cherished and be a small reminder of you. Your creativity and love for West will be missed. Thanks for all you've done for staff, students, and families. Pam, your perception of kids and teachers' needs is incredible. One of your strengths is that you're so good at understanding what to do without being asked. Your willingness to support the function of a classroom is beyond helpful, and the way you support kids with integrity and consistency is truly unmatched. The kindness, thoughtfulness, and sensitivity that you show kids will be so missed. Pam, I'm so thankful for all of your support, guidance, and understanding that you have provided me in my first year as principal at West. It's been a great experience to get to see you work alongside so many kids this year. You have a talent for providing support and teaching kids. I appreciate your consistency and your willingness to always go above and beyond to make sure that kids and teachers have what they need to be successful. I hope you enjoy your retirement, and I look forward to seeing you around our school next year. Our building won't be the same without you.
Ms. Waller?
Yes.
Can we have you for the picture? Our next honoree is Jane Klein, who's with the district for 30 years as the accountant. Is Jane here tonight? I'm thinking that I saw Jane. About a round of applause for Jane, even though she's not here. This is an opportunity to talk about her behind her back if you want. Our next retiree being honored tonight is Mr. Carlson.
This is going to be fun. I'm a little scared. Wrote down a few lines and then thought, "I'm not going to waste open-mic opportunity to talk about Tim," so. In an attempt to avoid this turning into somewhat of a roast, I will take Tim's advice and just read what I wrote down and stick to the script and not go off of it at all. For those of you that don't know about Tim's career here, he started off as a substitute teacher. At one point, was a computer lab supervisor. He was a driver's ed teacher, a basketball coach, an athletic director, and then a principal. Literally started at entry level and built his way up and saw how a school runs. Some of you out there know because you had children go through that Tim impacted, but one of those jobs, Tim being a coach, Tim was a tough coach. He was a coach whose antics, ripping off his jacket at times, screaming, questionable language, legendary halftime speeches and things like that, would more than likely have gotten fired today. But when you talk to people like Donna Hill or other parents or players, they don't mention those things at all. When you talk to them, you hear about the qualities that made him the leader we know him to be, most recently our principal. You hear about how he was as a friend, a father figure, a mentor, a champion for them. You hear about how he was willing to break down walls for them. Although many probably thought Tim was an unorthodox choice at the time to be our next principal, and by many standards, he was. He was coach and AD, not much of a curriculum background. But at that time, Tim was the perfect choice at the perfect time because he applied those same values to the principalship. Sycamore High School has had the most successful run academically, athletically, in the music, in the arts, that it ever has under Tim's leadership. But that's not why he will be remembered. He will be remembered because of the family atmosphere he created, always putting others and their needs first. He has strived to break down the walls of traditional education by implementing real-life experiences for students. He brought us academies, blended learning, he grew career tech, and many other things. He's been saying for years that something will flip education. Now, I'm not sure he predicted a worldwide pandemic, but somehow what his thoughts were in education came to fruition. He's been a champion for kids, always going above and beyond to give students what he terms the experience of a lifetime. This might mean a pair of shoes, a lunch, a dress for prom, or a safe ride to and from school every single day. Tim has always erred on the side of student-first, no matter what. Although he is retiring, Tim's legacy is embedded throughout this district. However, his influence stretches even further because of the many people he has mentored along the way. His assistant coaches have served as our own head boys' basketball coach three different times, a girls' coach had basketball one time. His assistant principals have become ADs at larger school districts, assistant superintendents at larger districts, assistant superintendents here, and pretty fitting, his replacement here. I'm not sure there's anyone that embodies what it means to be a Spartan or bleed black and hold more than Tim Carlson. He will truly be missed. So to my mentor, the man I got to perform at first wedding, for those of you that didn't know, Tim and Lynn, I was the pastor. My former boss, my current employee, that one feels good. But most importantly, the man my kid calls Naughty Tim, my kid, and the man I consider a close friend. Congratulations, it was a great run, and thank you for everyone, from everyone here, for all that you have done, our staff, our students, our district, and the community of Sycamore. Going to make it awkward like Chauncey didn't give you a hug, Tim, but congratulations.
Our next honoree is Jody Holtz.
All right. Jody has been a tremendous gift to West Elementary School. I've been lucky enough to see how she works with children in the classroom, and nobody does it better. The impact and support she provides to classroom teachers is tremendous. There is no doubt that Jody has made a difference in the lives of hundreds of students. Jody has made the lives of so many better just by being in it. She is a superhero in every sense of the word. Jody and I have known each other since high school. We are both proud Sycamore Spartan alumni. In 2009, I was lucky enough to be hired by the Mary Curie at West School. At this point, Jody already had 10 years in the district. I was ever so thankful to have a familiar face to teach me everything I needed to know as a para. Fast forward to 2015. As fate would have it, Jody's son and my daughter were married, and we became not only friends and coworkers, but family. Three years later, we shared the birth of our first grandchild and earned the long-awaited titles of grandma and mimi. Wishing you the warmest wishes for an amazing retirement and lots of sunny pool days. Whatever comes next for you, may it bring you the same joy and fulfillment as you have brought to so many of our children. Jody, you'll never know the difference that you have made in so many lives. You have been the mom, teacher, nurse, friend, and the most genuine person ever. You are truly empowering each and every person around you every day. Your laughter, knowledge, and love will be missed throughout West. Thank you for loving us. Enjoy your retirement. One more. Jody, I'm so thankful that I got to learn the ropes at West from you. There are so many things that I would have known nothing about without your expertise and experience. Although I was only able to see you in action for one year, I can tell that you've made such an impact on the lives of so many, both students and staff. You are so many people's go-to person at West. That support will be missed after Friday. I hope you enjoy your retirement, but you are never shy to come back and visit us.
Our next honoree is Christine Burke.
Well, first of all, I'd like to say I'm glad that Chris came tonight after she even found out I was speaking on her behalf, so that's good. Already starting off with a win. Hello and good evening, everybody. Thank you for allowing me to say a few words tonight on behalf of North School's own Ms. Burke. To say that I'm privileged to have this honor is a great understatement. For over 33 years, Chris has dedicated herself to educating students to be better readers, writers, thinkers, explorers, and friends. For those three decades, she's been a staple of the Sycamore education system and a bright light at North School. In fact, that light at North School began long before she became a teacher there. Attending North School herself as a child, it didn't take long for her to become a teacher in the making, as then her second-grade teacher, coworker, and fellow retiree tonight, Donna Hill recalls. Many years ago, this sweet little girl named Chris J. Cottson met me by the parking lot curb to greet me as I came to North School. I began each day with her smile and a hug, and when I had recess duty, she held my hand the entire recess and walked around the playground with me as I did crowd control. Fast forward a few years later, and here's Chris starting to teach in the same building, still giving people big smiles, and of course, helping out with crowd control. Chris is a true North Chris is a true North star. She went there, her kids have gone there, and she certainly left a one-of-a-kind mark there. Staff share they've never seen Chris without a smile on her face or a positive attitude. And I would also add, without a fountain Diet Coke in a cooler. Her students know that she loves them, and her coworkers know that she would do anything for them too. Over her tenure here, Chris has excelled in the areas that make lasting impacts. Chris is a teacher of the whole child, providing opportunities for them to grow and prosper, not only in academics, but in character. By creating inclusive and equitable learning environments, all children have a place they feel comfortable and take risks. And this is true of her. During my first few years as principal, a pandemic broke out, a first in her teaching career and just one of many firsts that occurred for her since I was brought in as principal, she has reported. At that time, Mrs. Burke had to shift her entire way of teaching to an online world full of new technology. All the gadgets and gizmos, Google Meets and DoSlide decks were no match for her. Although nearing retirement, you would never have guessed it by the way she jumped right in, taking it all in stride and creating new opportunities for students and families to learn and connect. This a true example of her hard work and determination to help students and learn and grow. Chris has been a pioneer in leading the way on great instructional practices and makes collaboration a priority, often sharing ideas for rigorous and challenging learning while mixing in fun and creativity. In her calm demeanor, she is good to remind us that kids are just kids, and they don't have to know everything about every subject in the world when they leave second grade. Since January, our staff has been celebrating Chris with legacy moments. You know, the ones that make you smile, remember a funny tale, or even shed a tear or two. Throughout that time, our staff has had the opportunity to highlight the wonderful traits Chris has, appreciate the gift that she is, and show gratitude for all that she's done. As one colleague finally writes, "Chris has been a gift to North School for many years. North has been tremendously blessed by her years of experience, willingness to learn new things, ability to build relationships with both staff and students, and her unwavering support of those new to the profession." Chris, you, your Scotcheroo's, and your chipper personality will certainly be missed at North School. But we know we can't be selfish. We all know you've earned this. Over the years, you've worked hard, creating lesson plans, calling parents, completing running records, attending meetings, filling out progress reports, and riding the waves of the next big thing. But now is the time to change gears and take time for you. As Mr. Rogers once said, "Often when you think you're at the end of something, you're at the beginning of something else." That new beginning starts in just a few days. You'll finally have time to spend with Bill, Amanda, and Allison, take trips to Disney at off-peak times without the worry of counting children every few minutes, and fly your Cubs W flag on your way out for a bike ride without any time limits. Your flowers will get more attention, you'll have more time to read for pleasure, and can have a fountain Diet Coke just anytime you see fit. It's time to focus on your other roles of mom, daughter, and friend. Thank you for leaving North School and our district a better place. As another colleague simply said, "Chris is leaving North better, and we're all blessed to have known her and worked with her." I can only hope we can all say that when our time comes. Congratulations, Chris, on your retirement. The best is yet to come.
Our next honoree is Wayne Zalasko. Wayne worked in, just worked in the warehouse, delivered, did inter-office mail. If you needed something in the district and it was somewhere else, Wayne got it, brought it to you. If you needed something that we didn't have, Wayne can bring it to you. Wayne worked here for 35 years, retired mid-year. We all had a pause as to whether or not he would show up, and he didn't make it tonight, but how about a round of applause for Wayne? That brings us to our final honoree in terms of retirement tonight. So, I'd like to ask Donna Hill to join me up at the podium. Pitch hitting a little bit. Donna works here at the middle school, but as I mentioned earlier tonight, it is awards night for the middle school. So, Mr. Clavon, Mrs. Frankowitz, and Mr. Drennan are all at the middle school. So, I'm pitch hitting a little bit, but I've had the pleasure to get to know Donna for my three years here and have a couple of comments that I'd like to share, as well as some comments that were shared with us from some of the staff. I remember meeting Donna. It was, again, my first year was pandemic, and we were out of school for a while. When we were finally in, and I had a chance to get out and visit schools, if I remember correctly, Donna was in the 7th grade collaboration area working with a student. Some of the tech people were in there, I think Steven might have been in there, and Max as well. And as I walked through, just trying to still get my bearings a little bit, Donna recognized who I was and saw, "Are you Mr. Wilder? Are you the new superintendent?" And made sure that she took a minute to not just meet me, but introduce herself. So, I had a couple of minutes to chat with everybody there. But that was my first meeting with Donna, and that warmth and kindness is something that I've seen in my short time here and that many of you know she has exhibited not only the 51 years here in our school district, but throughout her life. Donna Hill has made me laugh, these are comments shared with us from staff. You've made me laugh, but not necessarily cry, so that's not being seen there. "Donna Hill has made me laugh and cry more times than I can count with her stories." Some of those include being trapped in a table. Who wants to ask about that one? "Her Gucci grandma nickname." Might ask about that one, but... "And having a pet bat as a child." "She is a true gem that makes coming to work so fun. I will miss her so much." "I admire Donna for a lot of things, but at the top of my vest is her love for children. We are beyond lucky in the Sycamore schools that Donna blessed the lives of so many. She's one of those people that you just love to see because she was always full of energy and fun. Our entire district is better because of Donna's undeniable impact." And the last comment, "An incredible educator for over 50 years." Fifty years. "Donna, you are an inspiration to all that are lucky enough to know and work with you. You've been a wonderful role model to others, and you lead by example every single day. I will miss your kind words and smile each day. Best wishes to you in retirement." So, I've had the opportunity to meet Donna and chat with her from time to time over the last couple of years. The last week, the middle school hosted a retirement party for Donna. And it was great to see the crowd of people come out and friends that worked with her long ago, colleagues that have worked with her more recently, and just to hear all of the stories. Every single lesson plan book was on display in the library, is that right? All the 30 from her teaching career and then the 21 handbooks that she kept, the daybooks that she kept as an aide. So, I leafed through those a little bit. It's fun to see how things have changed a little bit. Some things haven't changed as much as I thought they had, but it was fun to flip through that and literally see history. I also got a chance to see Donna's first portrait, her first staff portrait, proudly on display. And I told her she looked as beautiful now as she did then.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. You're very welcome. It has been an absolute pleasure to work with Donna over my last three years. I know many of you have worked with her and known her longer than I have. 51 years is a legacy, an absolute legacy, for the children that she served, the families, the community. I don't know that I've mentioned her name to anybody that doesn't know who Donna Hill is. I've known Bruce for three years, and it turned out that I found out that they graduated together today. I didn't know that. So, everybody knows Donna, and she's had an impact on them. She already said she wants to come back and substitute teach, maybe after she takes a little bit of a break. You can't keep a good person down. But after 51 years, you deserve an enjoyable retirement, and we wish you the absolute best.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, thank you, thank you so much. We go to these things, the open houses and this type of thing, and it's all, thank you for service, thank you for this, thank you for that, which is wonderful to be thanked, we all appreciate that. But I'm gonna reverse it. I think this district, this town, I have gained far more from 51 years than any kids have gained from me. I mean, it goes back, I was 22 when I walked in the door of North School. And I just, I'm overwhelmed at the people I've met, the parents, the colleagues, my friends that go back 51 years. I was the baby when I walked in. And all I can say is if you're teaching now, love it. Try to love it. It's a little harder, maybe, to love today. There's a lot of interferences today that most of you are aware of that we have to kind of scramble for our support a little bit, whereas days back, we didn't have to so much. But that's more a reason for you guys to all think of the good in this job. Think of the kids, think of what you're doing, every bit of energy. You'll never get paid for the energy that you put forth. And the more you put forth, the more you love them, the more they become your kids. My friends here in the front row know that once they're your kids, they're always your kids. I went to a birthday party for, I haven't seen them in between, but one of my second graders turned 50, and I went to his birthday party. And my first, he didn't know I was coming. The first, my first kids are 56 years old now, and I had them when they were seven and eight. Those are the perks you get that money can't buy. And they'll get you through. I went to bed the other night, said my prayers, and I just said, "Thank you, God. I picked the right career. We have a lot to complain about, and it's legit. But I tell you, the stuff that money can't buy is the stuff that makes your life worth living. So, enjoy it, really enjoy it." Okay? That's it.
I'm gonna take a picture with Donna, but we have one more person that we'd like to recognize tonight. And this is something that Mr. Domba gets to do as our board president, so I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Domba.
As many of you know, the highest volunteer award that we get to give out each year is our honorary doctorate degree. And this year, it's my distinct privilege to award the honorary doctorate degree to Bruce Griffin. The first thing I'll say is... Can I see some ID, please? This is, you know, I was looking for Bruce in the back because he doesn't usually sit down. This is the longest I've seen you sit ever, so... But I want to say thanks to your wife, who provided us with some information about you.
Well, that's not always good.
Well, I tried to cut out the "really" bits. And so, I really edited down from about 10 pages to half a page.
So, I'm not really here to speak about KEC?
Uh...
Okay, maybe, okay.
Maybe. I think somehow you'll lend your way that way, so you usually do. But it's my turn to speak a little bit about you before you get to speak to us.
Can I go back and sit down?
No, you need to stand up here. You gotta take it. Bruce has been a lifelong Sycamore resident. His only venture away from Sycamore, besides college, was in 1971 when he took his dream job in Brainerd, Minnesota. And that was a teaching job that he was offered up there. And his greatest skills have always been coaching, teaching, and mentoring others. So, he enjoyed taking his first job, teaching agriculture, of all things, in Minnesota. After a year, he changed career course when his father became ill and Bruce needed to take on the family business. Bruce set his love of education aside and came home to carry on the tire business in Sycamore, known as Punk's Firestone, for nearly 30 years. So, he delayed that gratification of fulfilling his lifelong dream of being a teacher and mentor. Although I'm sure you did your fair share of teaching and mentoring there in the garage as well. Years later, he was reunited with his love of teaching others, and he began working for the Kishawaki Education Consortium. And this began the most meaningful part of his career. By combining his education and business knowledge, he began the Business Academy program for high school students. He's always been, I think at heart, directed to career tech initiatives and has worked hard throughout the entire community to try to achieve programs that promote that as well. Flying has always been one of Bruce's favorite hobbies, and at age 16, he started flying lessons. He received his pilot's license at age 17, and soon after, he received his commercial and instrumental ratings. After joining KEC, he combined his love for flying and education to create a classroom curriculum related to flight instruction. His classroom of flight simulators is something to see. Only ask, and he'll be happy to show you, and probably ask for a donation as well. Many of his former students have become commercial airline pilots or air traffic controllers. Seems to me that one of your first students, when you got that first simulator, went on to become a fighter pilot for the Air Force, if I'm not mistaken, right? One of the highlights that I remember is when Dr. Wayne Resin was superintendent. Wayne had his pilot's license, and he flew the simulator and crashed it. We all thought that was quite interesting and informative at the time. Bruce and his wife Diane have two daughters. And now their family has grown with the addition of his daughters' husbands and six grandchildren. One of his favorite vacation spots is Mackinac Island in Michigan, and the entire family visits often. Notes, texts, and cards from former students give him much pleasure. He loves watching and seeing his students achieve their dreams. In addition to the honorary doctorate, he's received quite a few prestigious awards throughout the community. Kishawaki College Foundation, he served on the Kishawaki College Foundation Board. He's received the John C. Roberts Community Service Award, the DeKalb County Tribute to Heroes Award, and the Clifford Danielson Outstanding Citizen Award. I present to you our latest honorary doctorate award winner, Bruce Griffin.
Steve, from now on, you can call me Doctor. From now on, you can call me Doctor. Jim, thank you very much. This is highly not expected. I came in to talk about Kishawaki Education Consortium, talk about Sycamore students. I'm hoping I still have that, 10 minutes?
Yeah, please.
Okay, because I want to talk to people about what we do for Sycamore students. However, Steve, I must say, and then I'll get off, you didn't have to say that I graduated with Donna. Because when I see Donna, when I see Donna through the buildings, you know, we hug each other, and we say, "We're still together, man. We're still working. We're the only two in the class of 1967, probably still working." But Tim Carlson thought I was only 50-years-old. Now he knows that's not true. So Jim, thank you very much. The board, thank you very much, and I'll come back up and talk about KEC. Thank you.
Before everyone leaves, it's obvious to visitors, kind of, one of the steps at four. Next, I have the communications correspondent, motivational advisor. Letters, emails. We had letters from ISP, from the conference, from the education. I just thought, so... I mean, that's where we just made it get on the website. That's our government airwork. So there were three requests to have been answered. Why you can tell it's end of year. You can tell it's end of year. Suspension report, committee reports?
So I did lure Bruce here under the guise of giving a program update, but I still would like Bruce to talk a little bit about what he does for Sycamore schools, and specifically for Sycamore students. Bruce has a role at KEC, Kishawaki Education Consortium, for a passion about, for in technical education, but there is part of what he does that really specifically supports Sycamore students. So I'm gonna let him enjoy his family just for a minute, but then we'll shift gears, and I'm gonna turn things over to Bruce. Very quickly, we host some CTE programs in our schools, things like agriculture, business, well, we've got our own welding shop through the agricultural program. So we offer CTE programs in-house at Sycamore High School, and at, some of those at Sycamore Middle School, too. For example, Ag is offered here at middle school. Our students also benefit from CTE opportunities at KEC, which we've already mentioned. And if you go to the KEC website, you can see a list of the programs that they offer there, and these are just a few of those. Nursing, early childhood, automotive and diesel mechanics, as well as barbering. If you learn how to cut hair, you can do that. The Legacy Academy is right down on 64, kind of on the east side of town. That's part of KEC and just another skill that our students can take advantage of. But Bruce, our new, I should say, Dr. Griffith, is involved in a couple of programs that specifically supports Sycamore students, so I'm gonna turn it over to Bruce.
Thank you very much. I'm excited to be here and talk about Kishawaki Education Consortium, and what we all do for Sycamore students. I'm gonna start out with this on the minute moment I'm on back to the board chair, and we'll talk about that in just a minute. And as long as you're here, I'm gonna hand out some of these cards, and we'll talk about those in just a second as well. Kishawaki Education Consortium is a group of five high schools, five school districts, offering CTE programs. And so I'll put my notes here, and those programs, like Steve had said, is Senior Business Leadership, Culinary Certified Nurse, Fire Science Emergency Medical Technician, Sports Medicine, Cosmetology, Ethics, Criminal Justice, Early Childhood, Computer Support, Mass Communications, Construction Trades, Diesel Technology, Aviation, Medical Terminology, Automated Engineering, as well as Barbering. So, those are things that I do every day. Those are programs that offer 2,500 hours of college credit to those students. They get two hours of high school credit, and we'll talk about a couple of these programs. For example, when we talk about auto, you cannot go to any auto dealership where you won't find a KEC student. You cannot go to any diesel repair facility that you can't find a KEC student. You cannot for sure go into the medical field of a hospital to a nursing home without finding a KEC student. And for example, when you go to our local fire department, and they bring out 32, 32 firemen, paramedics at the Sycamore Fire Department, and you ask the KEC students to step forward, nine will. And to give you an example, for years, when we started the KEC Fire Science Program, it was taught at the Sycamore Fire Department. You don't realize how successful it is until you have to call 911. And I needed to call 911 for my mother. Now, just a few years earlier, I was telling these two boys, who are now firemen and paramedics, quit kicking each other, quit hitting each other, please sit down. Upros ambulance, three get out, they walk up to the door, and they said, "Bruce, stop aside. We will take care of your mother." That's when you know that we're successful. That's when you know we're successful. On the other hand, the last time I got picked up on Sycamore, please. For turning in here, for not giving my signal at 10:00, 10:00 going to Genoa. And I thought I had pulled over, because she was gonna go by. Unbeknown to me, she stopped behind me. I thought maybe she was gonna ask directions. She said, she walked up, she said, "Bruce, how are you?" I said, "I'm doing well. Do you remember who I am? Give me some hints." And it dawned on me that she was in our healthcare program, and now she happens to be a Sycamore officer. And that wasn't too many years ago. So with the KEC, everything we do with 500 kids, 2,500 college credit hours that they can earn, doesn't cost these Sycamore students anything, it's a great, it's a great opportunity. But let's talk, one of the things when Steve called me up, and he said, "Bruce, you gotta tell the board what you do for the Sycamore students." And I said, "Well, in order for me to do that, Steve, I've gotta talk a little bit about the history." Because when I was in a middle school of Sycamore, not this one, not this one, but I had an employer, and the employer would have a huddle, and I was only in sixth, seventh grade. We'd have a huddle every day during the summer, and it was, "Here's what I expect you to do. Here's what I expect you to do for the day." And then the next day, I would say, "Well, I accomplished those things." And he says, "Bruce, I don't care what you did for me yesterday. I want to know what you're gonna do for me tomorrow." And so I took that advice, it hurt a little bit, but I looked the employer in the face, and I said, "Okay, Dad. I can do that. I can do that." But let me tell you a little about the history of what we've done for the Sycamore school system, and then a little bit about the foundation that we built. A few years ago, Tim Carlson got ahold of me and said, "Bruce, we need an institute day." I said, "Okay." So I got a, we, KEC got ahold of 19 employers, we shadowed 85 teachers during institute day, and we talked about customer service attitude, communication skills, initiative, decision-making, leadership, ethical behavior, safety, health habits, maturity, integrity. Because many of our teachers weren't even aware of what the community was. So we wanted to shadow the teachers, shadow the teachers out amongst the community. After that point, and talking with Kathy Kuntzman, we almost decided that, you know, we need to start a senior business leadership class. So we did, and we started with eight students. Starting in Sycamore, everything starts in Sycamore, right? So we started in Sycamore, and one of the first students, Joey, was vying for salutatorian, and yet Kevin Portman's daughter was vying for the same thing. She, all her high school classes were weighted. Senior business leadership was not. So we don't offer high school credit. We have college track. So we had about 500 students in the senior leadership. Who takes the credit? I can tell you Stanford will not. I can tell you that three Sycamore students go to Harvard, they won't take the $3000 tuition. I can tell you Northwestern won't. I can tell you the Brown won't. And so what we're doing with these students is all about leadership. They're smart kids. They're tremendously smart kids, but we work with over there on that wheel, you know? They call it essential skills that they need, essential skills. They may be the sharpest, but we need to deal with those essential skills. What we did then, what we did then is, we were taking about 30 Sycamore students out in the senior business leadership, and we were leaving 1,000, 1,000 students in the high school. So what can we do? What can we do to bring the community into the high school? And I'm sure that most of you have been in the student boardroom. In that boardroom, in that hallway, we put vinyl, we make it look like downtown, Main Street, and the saying in the one happens to be, and if I can get that real quick, and then I'll make it, I'll try to hurry. Bringing our community into the student lives. So if we're leaving 1,000 in the high school, we need to bring the community into that classroom, into that student boardroom, and that is what we're attempting, not just today, but every day. The, what have we done recently for Sycamore students? I can tell you that I made a connection with somebody. Alex, Lily, Mia, Ally, Garrett, Will, and Gabe just got almost full scholarships from a gentleman I met earlier. He was impressed with our Sycamore students. They are flying, and one, Luke Kemplin, is taking his final checkride in about 30 days. We've had students from Sycamore vying for the airlines, one for Delta, one for American, and I had a captain for Spirit Airlines. To build the foundation of what we can do for Sycamore students, it took money. Jim said something about me asking for money, and I don't mind making the ask. So what we did, I asked for $39,473.33 from a provider, who brought Comcast into the TV production studio. I then asked for another $60,000 for the TV production controls and the rack that all that goes into. And then $75,000 for TV production, for the middle school TV production, and the production in fifth grade at Southeast School. I then got a little bit nervous, I was asking for too much money, so I only asked for $11,714, which was used for audio switching, that you're currently using, and then an additional $75,000 for the furniture in the student boardroom, and that's all the foundation on what we're trying to build here, about bringing the community in. So what recently just happened? About a month ago, I taught aviation with Renee Riani, who works for KEC, and we happened to teach it for Kevin Bolz, where we taught two weeks with eighth graders. We ended up bringing them into the simulators, flying for a complete day, nothing broke. Nothing broke, that's good. And then the fifth grade, and I saw Tom was around here someplace, brought a simulator into the fifth grade group, and I think they enjoyed it. Some of the other things that we're doing is that Kevin was so impressed with our aviation that he is trying to start, not trying, he will, start an aviation program within the eighth grade. It's about STEMS, right? It's about science, math, communications. And so what I'm looking at today is I'm trying to find $80,000 so I can buy two simulators and bring into that middle school. I'll make sure you have my card in case you have to waste some money. But we will have two simulators in this school, in this school for eighth graders. The other thing in conversation with John Walter. John Walter happened to, has a TV production studio. I met with him all the course of this year, as well as with Kevin over the course of the year, and if you haven't been into the fifth grade TV studio, please do at Southeast. Some of the things forthcoming, he said, "Could you please give them what's gonna happen?" I said, "I'd love to." Pizza Ville and the History of the DeKalb Per Beernugget. Maria's Little Italy, they're gonna do podcasts on what it's like to live in Italy. Ollie's Custard, learning all about custard and the history of it. We also want to cover teacher's spotlights, district programs, hope to cover some live sporting events, and a story about would Steve Wilder go to electric buses? And so, please, if you're on the board, will visit those fifth grade classes, and so those are some of the things I'm working on. It never ends. So I did want to tell you about the almost 300,000. It took 300,000 to set the foundation, to set the foundation. But what recently happened in Sycamore is right down the street here, and that happens to be the old Andy Congo wired cable company. I met a gentleman a year and a half ago, and he happened to go to Fox Valley first time, which is somewhere to KEC. But he didn't want to go on to college. Not always necessary, is it? But he had skills. And he went to work for two years. He started Innovative Growers, one year, and he's only 26. It was him and one person, then it was him and 135 people, and he sold it for, he's not here, yeah, a lot of money, millions. And he called me one day, and he said, "I want to do something for students." So he gave us 12,000 square feet, he put $200,000 fixing up the space, I ordered $204,000 with the brand-new welders, and then the problem was, I needed to find $204,000 before the invoice came in. I went to two people, and got both of them, each getting $100,000. Now, the good news is, it's for KEC. The other good news is, it's a quarter mile away from this school. So I've been talking to administrators, saying, "How can we do something with our rolling manufacturing and soon our construction trades program a quarter mile down the road?" So we're trying to figure out how to get these middle school kids, the high school kids into our KEC lab. So Steve, when you first asked me to come and speak, I thought maybe you were gonna get a chair or two lights hanging around, okay? I am certainly a Sycamore person. I think... I think the K E C and the staff around K E C have a great concern for Sycamore students. And please come and visit down the road, come onto the airport. We have some great Sycamore students. And I don't wanna take any more of their time.
This is perfect. It's exactly what I wanted the board and the community to hear. Bruce does a lot for CTE and for K E C students, but pays a lot of attention to Sycamore students and we benefited from that in writing. Not just the dollar amount, as Bruce said, that's the foundation of the programs that we offer. But you've gotta have that in order to build the program. So things like the welding shop down, wouldn't happen so.
And I did, I want to answer one. Paracoid and parrot teacher and Matt Anderson, I don't know if I heard. I was able to help them. They were the lead, but on the employment share that we had for high school students. We had twenty-eight employers at the high school. They had all registered students with applications that came in. Today, lineup, Kara, there was, I think twenty-eight students got jobs from ten of those employers. So it's all about Sycamore, Main Street, right by the auditorium. Bring the community into the kids. So thank you very much. Jim, will you hold that up real quick, what that is? Do you know what I handed you? And then I'm out of here. What is that? So when I asked one of my grandsons over here, they thought it was a skateboard ramp, but actually it's a door. Day to day, I deal in this with K E C, this, when I pod you through, and he said, Bruce, I wanna thank what K E C does because you open the door, you provide opportunities for students. I can't walk through the door, but I can at least open the door where they can push it, push it themselves. It's the cards that you're reading, that you have. So what those cards say, 'cause I didn't wanna forget that. Thank you for holding for me. And if I may see one real quickly, that happens to be the belief decision-making. So we have a partnership with N I U. We happen to have, we had twenty-four teams in the ethics competition. There was fifty-four teams altogether. Just to let you know, it's all about decision-making, diving back. And if you had noticed, I think F is the mom's test. But we took Sycamore, took first, I had twenty-four teams out of fifteen. Sycamore took first.
I'd say so.
Second. See if it better. Third. And then a Wisconsin team came in and then a Genoa team did very well. Sycamore has taken every year that we've done it, except one year. There was two DeKalb kids and one Sycamore. They passed, see who's made it to cookie. And so I say Sycamore won because we got it cooked. So thank you very much, Steve, thank you, Jim. I won't take up any more of your time.
Thanks Bruce.
Thank you Bruce.
Any questions for Bruce before he sits down?
Yeah, I have one question.
Please.
When do the students, I was just in high school, but I didn't do K E C.
Why not?
Which I did. I didn't know really.
So your question is?
How did they get there during the day? Or is it outside of school hours?
No. So K E C teaches in three, three sessions. Eight forty to ten-ten, ten forty-five to twelve-ten, one o'clock to two-twenty. So we teach at Kishawaki College, Kishawaki College. They are transported by the homeschools. So they come in for ninety minutes, ninety minutes, and then go back and finish their academics. We try to teach a lot of stuff, for example, aviation. Shouldn't we go in the classroom? No, it's a part of the dump airport. Do we have simulators? The last one I purchased was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We have a half million dollars with the simulator. If you're gonna teach fire science, shouldn't it not be at the fire department? If you're gonna teach, oh, let's say barbering, that's right down in Sycamore. Or cosmetology, and hair professionals or debutantes. So ninety-minute sessions. You get two hours of high school credit, up to twenty-five hundred dollars, if you advise these kids to enroll.
So they get their high school credit while they're got it?
Exactly. I would love to be your tool.
That's really great.
Yeah.
I love a tool. I think this is really great. I didn't even know this existed. And I've been thinking there should be trade schools for the kids. Not everyone's gonna go to a higher level education.
We, for many years, built houses for K E C students. Right up to the magic year of two thousand and eight. And then we had to back off a little bit. And then the K E C students built the Santa Claus house. And they did some work for the town in Malta. The Chris Mayer I was just talking about, he has over two hundred tiny houses sold out in Colorado. He, he has a company in Colorado. And this, I call him a kid, he's twenty-six.
Wow, that's really great.
We are gonna start building them here now with our students, Murni. These tiny houses are going to Steamboat, Dale, Aspen, Wimmer Park. All the skiers. They're all the skiers. Love to, if you could put together a, I would love to. And I'd love to bring students in to talk to you because they're the ones that sell the program.
That's a great point. I would definitely want more information.
I'll see you have my phone number for you.
Okay, thank you.
No questions?
Oh, I was in your Business Leadership Academy. I had a, many friends go to K E C and...
Keep talking, Mike, don't pick a lot.
I gotta tell you, I can't begin to say just how amazing and thankful I am that you're in this community and giving so much to Sycamore students. It's an honor. I was twenty thirteen. I, I just am humbled by everything you have to say and I hope I can accomplish a shred of what you have in time.
I have a picture of the group that you can pick yourself up. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. It's an honor to, thank you for speaking.
You're welcome. Good, thank you.
Yep, thanks Bruce.
Yeah, I'll add, Bruce, just congratulations on the honorary doctor in my tenth year on the board. I'd say that your first presentation, and I can't remember the exact year, but I've just been blown away by this program. I feel like we come and meet every two weeks thinking that we're gonna somehow change the face of education. And to hear you talk about what you're doing, seems like it shouldn't be a changed education. Seems like that's what education should always have been and continues to be, but it sounds like it's not that case. It sounds like you're breaking new ground or maybe retreading ground that we've just forgotten about so many decades ago and giving students these, these real-world...
Basic stuff.
Right.
And I'll give you a...
But it's less theoretical and more applied, right? Where we kinda took this turn and everyone had to get so, so deep in theory that we kinda, we lost that group of kids who was looking for stuff they wanna do now, today.
It's, it's kinda like Oliver, we're here on nights that are the eighth graders, right? Oliver, who's one of my assistant students in aviation students, comes up to Mr. Wilder. And Renee Riani happens to be next to him, that's one of our aviation instructors as well. Oliver walks up and tells Mr. Wilder, Renee Riani is the best teacher I've ever had. I said, Oliver, I'm standing right here.
No offense to the other side.
Yeah, he's standing right here. Because there's a difference between being a teacher and being a man. And he says, here my man. But, you know, and if I could just, um, what, K E C's awful. Aren't they awful? There's, the kids are afraid to talk on them. And so I'll tell a story about my wife real quick and my two daughters. Real, real quick. I asked my wife, did my daughters call you up and wish you happy birth, or happy mother's day? They texted. And I said, did the daughters buy you anything? And she said, yes, they gave it to me a week ago. I said, did you send a thank you note? She said, I texted. And I'm going, if I can't fix this at home, I'm gonna have a hard time working with kids. So I gotta start tomorrow morning on that group over there and then we'll worry about the kids. Steve, thank you very much. Jim of the board, thank you very much for the high honor. I certainly wasn't expecting it. I will see you all have my phone number. We will give you a tour. I want you to meet some, some great Sycamore students. Thanks, I won't take up any more of your time.
Thank you. I can't top that, that's, that's it for superintendent.
Open discussion, issues, observations, questions?
Is our next meeting the retreat? What's, what's that about? Is it...
Doug's gonna focus, the focus is gonna be teaching and learning. Mr. Rice is gonna share some data from the school year. So it'll be, it'll focus on teaching and learning.
Okay, this is the last time I, I've talked about adding on revisiting the plan and seeing what interest in that. But I would just add, maybe investigating some sort of a dashboard with, with specific metrics. I know some other districts I looked at have that and that's something I'd be interested in entertaining here.
Yep, I think we can have some discussion about that at retreat too. I think it would seem pretty nice to actually.
That's all.
Other issues, questions? Can you trade them out? Next item then would be executive session. Is there a motion to go into executive session for consideration of matters related to the appointment, deployment, discipline, permitting, litigation, and selection of a person to fill a vacancy in the year? So moved.
I'll second it.
Roll call?
Shiloh?
Yes.
Vito?
Yes.
Evans? Yes. Greidos?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Damet?
Yes.
Questions?
Okay, we'll adjourn to the next meeting session. If they answer the whole session to a one. All right, so we're back in open session. Are we good to go?
Yeah, we're all good.
Is there a motion to approve the personnel report as presented? So moved.
Well, seconded.
Moved and seconded. Roll call?
Evans? Here. Greidos?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Shiloh?
Yes.
Vito?
Yes.
Damet?
Yes.
Questions?
We need a separate motion for... Or do we approve at the next meeting?
At the next meeting? Is that just a motion to adjourn?
All right, is there a motion to adjourn? So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all in paper?
Aye.
Propose. Miss Dan to adjourn. Thank you.
Thank you.